Being on or about 7:00 PM, the September 22nd, 2022, meeting of the Foxborough Planning Board will come to order. Anything on the planner's report?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, sure.
I didn't send out a formal one, I've been out. So, I had mentioned the last meeting that we were going to go to Selectman October 11th. We're going to put a hold on that while we continue to wait for the Mass Works grant, so stay tuned for further information.
So what are we doing, we're not going on October 11th?
We're not going on October 11th. Just so you know, Gabby, Scott, Shippey, the Building Commissioner and I have been meeting to discuss zoning changes for the Springtown meeting. As we've been working, you know, through the various projects, there are things always come up that we are looking at. This town meeting in November, no, December, sorry, will be, I think we've told you that everything's changing to Select Board, so we have to have a public hearing for that. That'll be coming up in the next month or so. We've been looking at some changes to accessory apartments, that's just to add, to specifically call out a need for secondary egress. It's required by the building code, but we want to make sure folks know when they're designing it, that's required. We're going to be developing some standards for site plan review for the exempt uses under the Dover Amendment. We actually have two of those tonight. Daycares and educational uses and religious uses are all subject to exemptions. You can do limited site plan review, but the use itself is a permitted use. Also during our Two Washington Street review, it's become very clear that the various kinds of warehouses and facilities associated with warehousing, so we're, I've been starting to do some research into definitions, you know, difference between a warehouse, fulfillment center, whatnot. And then, we're also going to be looking at solar. We realize we don't have anything directly addressing canopies and the like, so we're going to be addressing that. And then, earth removal, right now, the earth removal bylaw asks for a butters list, but it doesn't require a butter notification, probably add in that. That's not even this board, but it's just more of a housekeeping item. Just as a reminder, we have a site visit for Foranet Road on Wednesday, this coming Wednesday, the 28th, at 1:00 PM onsite. Diana's going to post that, and hopefully everybody can come take a look at that. Outdoor dining, if you recall, we passed zoning to allow outdoor dining on a permanent basis. As we enter next year, we have no idea whether we're going to still be under, you know, a pandemic-type situation, whether the state government is going to relax the A-B-C-C rules as they have been for the past three years, and also the outdoor dining and zoning rules. So, we did adopt permanent outdoor dining flexibility, and I did send out a memo to all the restaurants in town last week, just giving them a heads-up because some of them are going to have to come in here for approval through the planning board, and it's always better to do that, sort of when you don't need outdoor dining than, say, waiting till spring and suddenly wanting to outdoor dine next month, and we know it takes a little time. And then lastly, I did share an email with everybody, but as you may have heard, Mike Johns, the Assistant Town Manager, is moving on to be the Town Manager of Foxborough. So, that change will be occurring in the next, I believe his last day is November 4th, and we will, you know, be adjusting to some change as we get ready for Bill Keegan to leave, so there'll be some changes in Town Hall, as we all know. And that's all I have right now.
Okay. I think subdivisions?
Yeah, under active subdivisions, we have, Mr. Bonvy is here to give us an update on Loston Farm.
Okay. Want to come up?
Yeah, just as a reminder, we had Mr. Bonvy in the summer, and he's been working, giving us weekly updates, but we wanted, we had told him we'd want him to come in this meeting to just keep us abreast and sort of give us this updated schedule on Phase 1, maybe discuss Phase 2, make sure we're all on the same page and that we have a good plan moving forward.
So, we've installed approximately 1,600, 1,800 square, running feet of granite curbing. We have one load left, which is being cut right now in Georgia. Once that load has been cut, I can then have it shipped. I cannot set up shipping with my shipping company that I'm now a customer of until such time as the granite has been made. It's supposed to be made this coming week, and then I can set up the shipping. This last load will finish the job as discussed prior, everything excluding the double barrel entrance, because we didn't want to put the island in the double barrel entrance, everything else will be done. The curb, the sidewalk is complete excluding the bridge, because at the bridge location, or I'd call it a COVID crossing, it becomes tight, and without the granite installed, you could not put the sidewalk in, so we did the sidewalk in every other location but a couple of small spots. But that location, last weekend Bobby Baker finished that location with granite. I'm waiting to finish the granite, and then I'm going to finish all the sidewalk, which is only a minimal amount. Right now, you can walk down sidewalks at Loston Farm. You can actually, what I also did is I prepared the area across the bridge, all the way out to Main Street, so you could, with reclaimed, or actually reprocessed material, so you could actually walk to Main Street either on blacktop or on the processed material. So, there was access all the way out to Main Street, and there is today. So, again, to recap, one more load of granite, it's being made now. It usually takes a week to make, but I can tell you it could spill into an extra day or two. The shipping company, I call them as soon as it's made, they call the granite company to confirm it's waiting there for them, and that it has the appropriate dunage, new word that I've learned, I'm not a shipping guy, and at that point in time, I supply them with that, or they supply them with that, and the granite arrives, we get a call two days in advance of that arrival, or a day in advance, actually, and we unload it onsite. Bobby Baker then comes in and installs it. He's standing by for the installation. I have my sidewalk guy standing by for the installation to finish that sidewalk. Moving on, I've met with, myself and the tree warden of this town has met with Blueview Nursery and Norton in person, with me attending. He accepted the trees that will be going into Loston Farm. We plan on installing them two weeks, something like that nature, just a rough guideline. The pole for the light is arriving next week, I was notified yesterday. It was like a seven, eight-week delivery. I was physically called, or it was a call into me yesterday, and it will be arriving next week. The process is, call the electric company, disconnect the existing pole and light that's up there right now, that's operational. The electric company comes out, disconnects, I take the pole and light out, I then set up the new pole and light, I then put the pole and light in the ground, I call the electrical inspector, he comes, he or she, I think it's a he, comes out, inspects that installation, gets turnover with the electric company, they come back and liven it. So, it's not going to be a one-day process, but the pole is here, will be here this coming week. I'm not sure if there's anything else left on the list that I need to discuss in reference to Phase 1.
So, I, I'm sorry. I spoke with Chris Gallagher today, he apologized, he was supposed to send me a memo, you know, corroborating Mr. Bonvy's report to you. So, he and Lance have been inspecting the work as it's being done, so they're satisfied with the work that has been done. The only thing that I would recommend to the board is that we request a date for the installation of the trees. Right now, this is the prime time for installing trees, according to Chris, so, you know, we, I would request that, we don't have, you know, the next two or three weeks, but we have a date for which the trees to be installed.
And by that, you mean an outside date, not a specific date, but just it'll be done by a certain?
By a certain date, yes.
If I could say, and I plant a lot of trees, as you can imagine, a lot of subjects, so historically, we get into, and I went over this with your tree warden, I'd really, you know, homeowner now speaking, as a homeowner, I'd like to have that type of tree, or that type of tree, not that that type of tree or that type of, I really don't want to get into that, and neither does he. My goal is to get what is at the nursery at the time we get it, which is your approved trees. I won't go, I'm not asking to go beyond that, but I'm going to then put the trees in. I will try to do a certain amount of discussion with homeowners, but sometimes I can't get what a homeowner wants, and it's on the list, but you can't get it, so I'm, I'm just trying to move it forward, and I understand, I guess what I'm just trying to say is, is try to understand that there could be a little bit of situation there that could get a little dicey. It's happened to me before.
Not as far as we're concerned.
Well, I think if we put a date, you can just let the residents know that, listen, this has to be in, I can't get it by that date, sorry.
I'm more than happy to do that.
That'll help your conversation.
Requiring a certain amount of trees, a certain types of species, beyond that, it's out of our purview, so.
I'm totally happy with that.
Fulfill your obligation, we're good.
So, if we're going to put forward a date, what's an appropriate date?
Two weeks, within the next two weeks, October 8th, or something like that?
Or would you like another week?
I would say mid-October, and I'll say this, and you can check with Anthony from Blueview Nurseries, he tells me the fall, and I'm not asking to this, because it's got to be done in the next two to three weeks. But he's saying, you can plant a tree in the middle of winter, it'll be, you cannot plant a tree, you shouldn't plant a tree in July or August. My point is this, if October 15th comes around, and it's a day later, two days late because of weather or rain or something, please understand, the tree will still survive, and I have to guarantee it anyway. I've just, I just finished this in Norfolk, like 400, 350 trees, and, you know, I understand, they're my trees until you own them, and you're not going to own them for some time.
Right, but we can expect them to be placed by a certain date.
For argument's sake tonight, why don't we just say by October 15th?
Yeah, and that's fine.
October 15th.
As long as you understand, I'm totally fine with that. I will come to this board if there's a problem and tell you what the problem is, if in fact there is a problem.
Okay.
And what are you thinking, so looking at the pole, you have to disconnect, so you're going to get it next week?
I'm going to get the pole next week.
And then you have to disconnect, you're going to have to get electric company out there to do it, how long does that typically take?
I can tell you, I've waited in the town of Mashpee to have a pole disconnected, and I've waited now three weeks. And I'm still not aware of when it's going to be connected. And that's why I'm saying, I just got off the phone with my electrician, Anthony Triolo, and he told me he's waited as long as a month to have a, like, connected.
Is it fair to say that within two weeks after the electric company disconnects it, you will have the electrical inspector out to inspect it, the new one, within two weeks of the date that the electric company actually?
Disconnects?
Guaranteed. I, my electrician works for me twice a week, so I have no problem with that connection. I just can't control the electric company, but I can control my electrician pretty well.
Anything else, Paige?
I do have one other question. Some of the residents, I'm sure you've heard this, some of the residents have asked about the connection to the open space, and if you recall, in the decision, it's really your choice as to whether you provide the connection or whether you provide $10,000 for the town. Have you any sense of what you're thinking on that, and any sense of direction where you're going to go on that?
I think we haven't decided yet, Paige, we've been talking about it, so, and we don't want to commit to it, because that could be two years from now.
Okay, so it'll be a while before you make that decision?
It will be before, you know, we won't make that decision until we're at the point where we're going to ask the town to accept it.
Okay. Okay, I guess that's it.
All right.
Good, thank you.
Thank you for coming in.
Appreciate it.
By the way, I should have mentioned, as you can see, we have Tom.
Yes.
Presenting remotely, he's, he's under the weather and sparing us his germs.
Feel better.
Unlike you.
Unlike me.
Poor Gabby.
I know.
So.
I'm here for her.
Meeting minutes?
Yeah, meeting minutes from September 8th?
Are we good to vote on them?
I've reviewed them, I have too.
Yeah, I'm good. I make a motion to accept the meeting minutes from September 8th, 2022?
I'll second that.
Those in favor?
Aye.
And, being almost exactly 7:15 PM, we have a continued public hearing for a special permit. Well, actually, this, there was one scheduled for Two Washington Street, the applicant's requested a continuance to October 27th, 2022. And we'll wait a couple more minutes, and then we'll be able to go to 33 Commercial Street.
What about the bond reduction request?
Whose is that?
River Ridge subdivision.
We need Bill back inside if we're going to do this.
Do you want me to go get him?
Do we need him for that, or are we all set?
Do we need Bill for it?
I don't think so.
Sure, okay.
Yeah.
Just refresh our memory about where River Ridge is.
So, River Ridge is on East Belcher Road.
Okay.
It's a little SID that we approved two years ago, maybe. They've gone gangbusters, they sold every lot, they've done all the work. I still need to corroborate with Chris Gallagher. I spoke with him today, and again, he apologized that he didn't have a report for us. So, the work is mostly complete, so they're asking for the reduction of their bond.
$457,000.
Yeah, so, yeah, right now we're holding $511,447, and I'm recommending that we keep as the new bond amount 54,282, or if you want to round it up to 55.
Do you know what they're holding for right now? Or no?
What?
Do you know what they're holding for right now on that, you know, that money that you're recommending the reduction to?
Oh, what's, what's not being done? You have the report in your packet.
A little bit of site work left to.
Yeah.
All right, got it.
The first two items are removal of sediment, that is something that gets done when the street is about to be accepted, or something that's done yearly, actually. But, the, the ask-built plans is what's, you know, the most costly of all.
What about the removal of the drainage, oh, that's the sediment, okay.
Yeah. Yeah, there's, there's two roads, so they have to do it for both.
Yeah, I don't see any problem.
So, I would recommend that we vote, that you vote that to reduce that amount, depending on, you know, waiting on Chris Gallagher's final report to us, so I can release the letter reducing the amount once I receive the report from Chris.
I make a motion to reduce the performance guarantee by $457,165, with the new bond amount to be 54,282, contingent upon the receipt of the memorandum from Chris Gallagher.
Second?
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
You got one minute. You can come up, is that a?
Yeah, sure.
It's amazing how things go when Washington Street's not on the agenda.
And this was the nice gentleman who did it virtually.
I did it virtually, it's the last meeting, I was here, yes, I was here.
You were here in spirit.
You were somewhere. I was, I was somewhere.
Usually the easel's best over there, sort of.
With what the white stripe is.
Should we set up the computer for virtual?
Yes, yes.
How do I plug in, where do I plug in?
The best way to do is log into Zoom.
Okay.
And then just turn off your speaker, so you don't echo.
Make sure it's on mute.
All right, I'm going to put my skills to the test here.
I'll walk you through it.
Buckley and Harry can help you.
It's our ID guy.
He's a town, he's an engineer.
Well, it's kind of a meeting.
It is. So, anyway, being on or about 7:20 PM, we have a public hearing for a site plan review 33 Commercial Street, demolition of existing building and reconstruction of a religious temple for the Sanskar Cultural Society.
It's a beautiful building.
That is gorgeous.
That is an absolutely gorgeous building.
Oh, you guys took away my big reveal.
I'm just, I'm just very impressed with two easels. Most people do not come with two easels. That's beautiful.
Paige, is there Wi-Fi here?
Hold on, let me get.
Yeah, I think it's Guest.
Fox Guest? Yeah, that looks right.
Do you have a link to the Zoom, you could just email?
Do you want me to do what?
I was going to try to email it to you, but you're not on email right now, are you?
Log on to.
Log on to the Zoom thing.
Log on to Zoom.
Through the agenda?
We're going to try to send, well, yeah, if you go on.
Here, just, can you just download Zoom?
Yeah, I have it downloaded.
If you go to foxboroughma.gov.
Yeah.
That's the code, the law, yeah.
Okay, cool, no problem, thank you. That didn't work.
You clicked on the, the sign in.
Sign in, there we go, okay. What's it forgot?
Just on time.
Come on.
City's joining, eh?
What a pain. I'm not trying to hack NASA here, for crying out loud, we should be able to do this.
You need a millennial.
Yeah, where are my kids when I need them? 662267.
What is this Zoom code?
All right, so how do we join a meeting, go to join? And then type in that code?
Yep.
029.
8990295. What's that, 382?
4.
Where from then?
And then just press join?
Just press join.
It's going to ask for this.
For the next code.
Launch code.
It ejects Kevin when you put it in.
That's it, there's a red button.
Say later.
Oh, you told me how you made it.
Like launch meeting.
Reading passcode, and that's 028.
984.
984. Let me in, hey, there we go.
Are you on mute? Oh, yeah.
Join with video.
Now shut off your.
Turn off the, the audio.
Audio.
Thanks, Bill.
Down here, shut off your.
There we go. Look at that, it only took everybody in the room, but we're here.
So, just, so just before we start, just as Paige mentioned this earlier on in the meeting, just so anyone who's at home and is watching understands that this hearing and the one that's going to follow us are site plan reviews, they are allowed by right, more or less, under certain regulations, both local and state, and so, I just want everyone in the audience to understand, this is more of a cursory type of review, we have no right to deny the type of use that's there, so, please feel free.
Excellent, well, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, staff, for the record, my name is Eric Dias, I'm a registered professional engineer with Strongpoint Engineering Solutions. With me tonight, representing the applicant, is Jemmen Patel, Vijay Patel, and Janesh Patel. I was, as you mentioned before we started, I was before you virtually two weeks ago, to talk about some fees and kind of present some things. We're here tonight in a very much an introductory capacity. We know that this has to go to a peer review for stormwater, which I think has begun, but is certainly not complete yet. The police has reached out to us, they have a couple of things that they'd like to discuss regarding public safety requirements for places of worship, that are kind of new regulations that they just want to make sure that we hit on, so we're certainly not ready to close tonight, but we wanted to come, get some preliminary input from the board, so that way, as we move through this process, if there are revisions to be made, we can incorporate your comments at the same time. I, I'm going to share my screen in a minute, but I'll start by saying, and I think I said this at the last time, the 33 Commercial Street is the temple that these folks are in now, it's right next to the Charter School. It's really a renovated office building, right? Brick facade, big glass windows and metal frame. They're looking to move into something that is much more ornamental, something that represents their faith and their culture a lot better. And the purpose of this is not necessarily to grow the congregation, it's simply to serve the congregation that they have. So, I'm going to share my screen.
How big is the congregation?
How many folks do you guys have?
For memberships, we could count 2,000 people as our members, but active members, on a weekly basis, we might see about 200 to 300 people.
Sounds about right for all of us.
Thank you. So, I generally start, because I'm a civil, right, my area of expertise is the site, so I generally start with the site, but since this is an introduction, I'm going to start with the graphics of the building, because I think they're just very impressive, and they, they do a lot to speak to what these folks are trying to accomplish here. So, this is a rendering of the face of the building, so this is going to replace the brick facade that you see on, when you go to that site now. And then, very ornamental, we have kept this, this spire height to less than what's required for height under the zoning bylaw, so we're not seeking zoning relief in order to do this, which is good. Moving up, this one is also really cool, this is kind of an aerial view that we've been able to insert, you can see the Charter School is off to the side here, the other school in the back. Much of this parking lot is existing today. We are not proposing to redo the entire parking lot for this. And then, if we go through here, just a couple more renderings, elevations of what this thing is going to look like, again, I think the architect did just a fantastic job putting these together. And then come the floor plans, so this is the second floor, I'm going backwards through the set here, so let me jump to the first. This building's very involved, it's got a lot of uses, we have a worship area, we have a gymnasium, we have classroom areas, there are living quarters. The good news is, not all of those things are going to happen at the same time, right? If we have a worship service going on, we're not going to probably have the function hall and the gymnasium full at the same time, so we're not overlapping our uses when it comes to parking and septic loading and things like that, they'll be very much isolated throughout the course of, of business, basically, and obviously, your highest use is going to be during services on the weekend, during times when the Charter School is perhaps empty, which is good.
Can I just interject there?
Of course.
Is that accurate, or will there be other activities at other times that will also be well-attended?
We don't project anything to our capacity during the weekdays, but there will be events during the weekdays.
Of course.
Sure.
And you mentioned residents?
Yeah, there's a residence, it's my understanding, and Janesh, please correct me if I'm wrong, the priest lives there full-time, is that correct?
Not right now, but once the new one.
Yeah, so that's the ask, is the priest and the family would be able to live there? Upstairs.
And the purpose of that is, throughout the course of the day, they give offerings, throughout the course of the day and the night, they give offerings to the various deities and things like that, so they need to be onsite.
And that's in the building itself, not a separate?
That's in the building itself, yes, which.
It's on the second floor.
I don't know, I think their kids would probably have fun running around the building all themselves, I guess, that's right. So, let me jump through the site plans real quick and kind of show you what we're up against here. So, this first one is a graphic of the entirety of the site. This is the existing building here, it's this L-shaped building, we have some wetland resources over along Commercial Street over here, you can see we have a giant parking lot, we have 321 parking spaces in there right now, which is enough for their day-to-day use, I just sunk in my chair, that's okay.
Nobody saw that.
It's enough for their day-to-day use, they do have kind of a handshake agreement with the Charter School next door, that if they need overflow parking, they can utilize their space as well. They, I don't know how often they need that, but that's certainly an option if need be. The total site is about 18 acres, we're only proposing to disturb 4.7, and it's this area where you see the box that says "project area" in the corners, right? We're not going to tear up the whole parking lot, we're just going to tear up what we need to. So, moving forward, this is just a blow-up of that same area, we've done some test pits out there, soil borings for structural reasons, to make sure that we can site this thing, we've got good conditions, deep to groundwater, which is very good. A demolition plan that shows that we do have some stormwater structures that are going to have to be relocated through this area here, because they're going to be in the footprint of the building, we do have some utilities that wrap around the back of the building that are going to have to be relocated, but the real seller is this one here. So, this is the new building footprint in a reconfiguration of what we're doing with the parking areas through here. You can see where my cursor is, the existing parking wraps all the way up here under the building, okay? So, we're going to take that, we're going to leave the parking bays intact and put in a new two-way drive aisle. This cul-de-sac, mini cul-de-sac over here, is actually going to have an ornamental fountain in the middle of it, and so, we've tried to really leave that as kind of a focal point for photos and things like that, when there are ceremonies at the, at the temple and things like that. One thing I will say that we're doing is this area, this parking bay through here, One thing I will say that we're doing is this area, this parking bay through here, we're restriping this parking bay, and the reason is, in the existing condition, they don't have enough ADA accessible parking stalls to meet the ADA requirements. So we are actually increasing the number of handicap accessible parking stalls to make that requirement. So we're gonna bring them into compliance with that. And I think we might lose one space. That's where we come up with 321 total parking spaces. The site is currently serviced on municipal water and an onsite septic system. I'm gonna scoot back up here for a minute. That onsite septic system is located where you see my cursor, right here. Okay, there are tanks along this side of the building. They discharge through a pump chamber to an onsite septic system. We've done some review of it. We feel that it's adequate to service what we need to. So we're proposing to reuse that. We're not gonna disturb the tanks. We're not gonna disturb the leaching field. We're gonna leave it where it is. There is a potential opportunity at some point for us to connect to municipal system through the Charter School, and we're investigating the possibility of doing that now. But for our immediate purposes for site plan review, what we do have, we believe, is sufficient. We have stormwater management on this site is very... Well, let me put it this way. Right now, it's a sea of pavement, and we all know what happens with runoff from a sea of pavement. We are actually increasing a little bit of impervious area because the building is bigger, so we do have some more rooftop area. We propose two areas of stormwater management. One is a small rain garden right here that we would basically just collect and infiltrate into the ground. The other one is in this lawn area here. It's gonna take a portion of the rooftop, so we're gonna pipe into it. We're gonna plant around it so it's screened and hidden, and it's going to discharge into the ground with an overflow to connect to the closed drainage system.
But that won't interfere with your existing septic system?
It will not, no. In fact, I'll go to this plan over here that shows the contours and the drainage. Our septic system is coming out this way, and we are doing all of our work over here in this area here. And I know that, I believe it's environmental partners, correct me if I'm wrong, who's doing the peer review on the stormwater system. So we certainly expect that they'll have a few comments. We'll touch them up. We'll make this thing work. Other than that, you know, site lighting is, we're gonna use the lighting that we have onsite now. The building itself will be illuminated to some degree. I'm sure there'll be lights in the spires, things like that. We can address those through whatever ordinance we need to with the architectural plans, no doubt. Landscaping, admittedly, we've kept it very vague on this. We wanted to give these folks the opportunity to kind of bring in a landscape architect and give them some flexibility with what they're gonna do to serve their own needs here. And aside from that, we've got some construction details, and that's about it. So that's...
Architect's on the call in case.
Oh, I did not realize that. Avart Patel, our architect from New Jersey, is on the call in case you have any questions about architecture, or if Avart wants to throw anything in here. But by all means, I'll turn, rather than me droning on...
I don't particularly have any questions, but I don't know if other board members or Paige or Gabby do.
What do you think, what is thoughts from a timing perspective?
What are our thoughts from a timing perspective? I think, you know, realistically, if we get through site plan review, we'd like to break ground in the spring.
Yeah, probably in March, April.
And then completion, how long will it take to complete?
This is probably close to a year build.
Or maybe two years, depending on how the lead time items are and some of the things. Realistically, yeah.
One thing to note, too, a lot of the, you know, the building structure itself is relatively basic, but a lot of the ornamental and ornate structures are coming from India. So we gotta get them here, things like that. That could lead to supply chain stuff. But I'd say a year or two years to build this thing.
Are you raising the current building?
Gone.
Okay. So what are your plans in terms of your congregation? Where will you be meeting in the interim?
Uh, we're renting space. We're looking at warehouse space in Franklin, Foxborough. So we're gonna move the entire temple.
Stick with it, guys. You'll get there.
And they're all still smiling. Good.
I think this is gonna be a great project. I think it's gonna be a great project for the town. It's really gonna dress up this area a lot. I think they've put a lot of, we've spent... Shoot, we've probably been in at least development phase of this project. My office has been involved for at least a year, if not more than that now. So it's been a very thoughtful process, is the only reason that I bring that up. So these guys are really, you know, building something that they can be proud of.
Right now...
It's gonna be very pretty. It's a shame you won't be able to see it from the street.
We can clear trees.
No, no. We'll just come visit. We can visit. Now, the Charter School, are they using your driveway?
Current.
Right. So the main driveway from the Commercial Street, it's easement. We both can use that.
And will that continue?
That's easement done, so.
Okay.
We have good relationship with them and...
It sounds like you do.
So it's fine, you know.
Good, okay. Because that easement
Yeah.
has helped a great deal.
Yeah, and it's beneficial, because most of the weekdays, we don't have much use.
And they use our parking lot.
And then we use theirs.
Every time, school time, school years, our parking, they use it.
Good.
That's great.
I know we have limited capacity, but I just have one question on the parking. Is the amount of parking that they're proposing adequate for the size of this building? Or is that even not?
We'll have to check that. I'll take a look at that.
That would be my only real concern.
What we did, just if I can speak to that, when we did our parking count, we did not consider that every use in this building was gonna be used at the same time.
No.
We said, you know, our worst-case scenario, and I can go to the parking count to kind of show you how we came up with this. Let me pull this up real quick. So we said, you know, there's obviously a requirement for storage. That doesn't change. Office accessory use, that's, could be used at any time. Residential units not gonna change. And then our biggest draw is gonna be a worship service, right? So that falls under the restaurant nightclub in recreation halls. And so we're saying that we need at least, to handle the amount of square footage we have, we need at least 301 stalls to do that. We have 320, so we make it.
I haven't seen these counts. It just sounds short for the size of the building.
Understood. Understood.
And then the other main thing is, compared to like other places, it's not, you have more than one person per vehicle.
Right, right.
Especially like usually three, four persons per vehicle.
It's come to the family, so.
Yes, of course.
And if we did run short, we do have the provision in our zoning to allow shared parking. So again, if you ever wanted to go formally with the Charter School, that's always also an option if you were running up against any issues. We could try to see how that worked out. But for right now, assuming this passes muster, what would be... So if you added up all the uses, all the time, I mean, what would, not saying that would ever happen, but what is the difference there? Like, what are you not counting at certain times?
I don't have that figure off the top of my head, but I can certainly get that for you, so we can kind of compare and contrast.
Sure, just to know, but...
Classrooms and what else we have?
Classrooms, the gymnasium.
The gymnasium.
Gymnasium.
Kitchen.
Got it. Yeah, yeah, okay. It might be more just to make sure we have the right conditions written up, you know, where we may be conditioned the approval to ensure that folks, you know, 10 years from now, know that they can't have full classrooms, full worship, full, everything going at once. Yeah, something like that.
Yeah, I can certainly get those figures for you, without a doubt.
We got a memo from the Board of Health endorsing this plan because they, you know, they have had to retrofit an office building with some kitchen facilities and things like that, and the Board of Health is glad to, you know, have new equipment, new everything that doesn't have to be retrofitted. So they're pleased with what's being proposed.
And are they also cool with reutilizing existing septic?
They...
They did have some comments about the septic flow. They had a question about the flow. So we'll address that as part of what we do with the police and everybody before we get back here. I'm very confident we can satisfy them.
Okay. Any other notes there, Kevin?
No, just, you know, I know that we mentioned that Chief Grace wants to have some conversations with them.
I intend to reach out next week.
And that, you know, nothing from the fire department. Gabby just, you know, capsulated the Board of Health thing. I mean, I hope you felt, you know, from my recollection from the beginning, you know, I feel like you've been welcome in the community. I hope you still feel that way, and I hope the process will go smoothly and you get to the place of worship you really want.
Yeah, this looks great.
Thank you.
I'm sure you must be very excited. Great presentation.
It's been a long time, Congress.
I bet it has.
I know. I think you came in, what, a year, a couple of years ago to start talking about this?
It was, yeah. We put a lot of time, well, these folks even more than I have, but we put a lot of thought in time into this.
But we will celebrate.
How long do you think you need until the next hearing? You know, how much time is it gonna take to work everything out?
When is your next hearing scheduled?
October 13th.
October 13th. Why don't we put it on for that, because I'm pretty confident we can address things pretty quickly? And if for some reason we get a week out and it doesn't look like we're gone, do I request a formal continuance? Does that make sense?
What time?
What?
I've been trained by Diana.
So Kevin, just so you know, you're listed as not in.
I'm not in.
You're absent that day.
Yes, I am.
Will that still give us quorum?
Yeah.
Yes.
Right now, I have on the continuance of the 204 East Street, so we put them at 7:15.
These guys?
These guys, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, do you want a motion? Motion to continue the public hearing for the site plan review for 33 Commercial Street to October 13th at 7:15.
Second.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Thank you for coming in, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Nice to meet you all.
Get to having you help.
And order early for your stuff coming.
Did we, when you continued to Washington, what time, when did you continue that to?
I don't think I mentioned it then. No, you didn't. I did not. There's no time on.
Oh, should we?
Yeah, we gotta...
I make a motion to continue the public hearing for special permit at 2 Washington Street until October 27th at...
Well, we have Turner Road at 7:15, so wanna do 7:30? Because we don't know if Turner Road's gonna come in.
How about you do 7:25?
7:25.
Okay, so till the 27th at 7:25 PM.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right, so 2 Washington Street is October 27th.
7:25.
At 7:25 PM for anybody watching at home.
And 33 Commercial is the 13th at 7:15. Correct.
Mr. King, just for the record, we could die of thirst around here.
He should have been first.
I got on Sammy the other day.
Why are we dying of thirst?
Oh, he wants a beer.
Oh.
He's witty.
It's looking good.
It is looking good.
Ten more years, we'll have it down pat.
Did you get your gas and your...
Bill, thank you for your...
Doug, is your gas and your electric working out? Doug, gas and electric working out, the connections?
The gas, not yet, probably.
Getting there?
Electric's...
Electric gas?
No gas yet, though.
Thank you very much, sir.
He's afraid, though.
Thank you, my friend.
So again, it being sometime past 7:30 PM, we have a public hearing, site plan review, 25 Chestnut Street for construction of a childcare center. Douglas A. King, Builders Inc., and as I mentioned in the previous hearing for the adification of anyone at home or in the audience who's watching, that both of these uses are allowed uses. They cannot be denied based on the type of use. The site plan review is, in essence, cursory, just for us to make sure that certain things, you know, fit the bill. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Buckley and Mr. King, whenever they're ready.
Want to just give a quick recap at the beginning, Doug, here?
Tried a lot of different things on this land, but I think this...
What's gonna stick?
But now we finally got this Bright Pass daycare nursery school, I think is gonna be good for them, good for the community, and fill that last piece of ours in with a great business and a great use. I don't know. Have you people seen the plans? I can give you...
Not those. You have.
No, we got them.
Oh, we have those. They're in the end of the back.
Okay.
So this is a, this is a 1.23 acre parcel. It lands on the south side of Chestnut Street, right opposite the entrance of Pace and Road. It's behind Congrats. I think everybody knows where it is. Last year, it was used as a pop-up for the beer tent pop-up. And then prior to that, actually, back in December 2007, this was approved for a 12,000 square foot office building, which was gonna be a bank and an office. We looked at it actually as allocation for the town hall. So as Doug just said, you know, we've looked at it for a lot of things. This was, a lot was created in 2008. It used to be three single-family, three single, three single-family, yeah, three R-15 lots. And what was done back then, I know Greeter's listening, but the... So the planning board was awesome. This was during the recession. You know, everything was, you know, we had all this planning being done in 2000-ish. We had a master plan, and then, of course, the recession hit, and a lot of that just kind of went out the window. And the planning board worked with Doug and Toshir and Vinco to keep things moving along. And one of the things that was done here was, Kevin was on the board at the time, was we took the three single families out of here and put them into duplexes behind us on Shea Lane, which Shea Lane was never gonna be duplexes at the beginning. So, and then one of the things that we did is a mitigation, or whatever you wanna call it, is built that circle over there for Coppola, Coppola Circle. That was one of the things that was done. So this is a commercial lot, because it is in the Seapod District, and it's in the R-40, I mean, the R-15. So there's commercial to the north, which is the old state hospitals, commercial to the west, which is shops at Chestnut Green. So the east is the old administrator's home, which is now a triplex. And to the south are houses on Shea Lane, which are duplexes. And actually, Mr. King owns most of the residential around there. The, this building is a 14,346 square feet, one-story building. It's a child, it will be a childcare facility, as defined under Mass General Law. And as Kevin and Paige pointed out, this comes under special limited site plan review. The proposed, or the estimated population will be a maximum of 34 employees and 200 children. And if you look at some of the sheets that we gave you in the back, the architectural drawings, they're actually rough floor plans that show you how the buildings are laid out for toddlers, for little kids, and for, you know, the older kids. The site will be accessed, right, if you look up there on the board, I'm just kind of showing you, this is the approximate area of the existing curb cut, where you can go in now, and where the, that was the old curb cut to the Dexter Building. And so you can see the two new curb cuts will be to the east and west of it. And we put that in there in order to create enough parking. And then one of the reasons we also built that is we wanted to make sure... Because we never know, you know, if you remember during daycare, kids would, Paige pointed, was this out to me, and I remember this, is your kids, you didn't go in. You just dropped your kids off. They grabbed them and pulled them in. So sometimes you have a queue. So if you, if that ever came back, you'd have a queue here of about 16, 13 to 16 cars, depending on the drivers. So you could come in this side, it's two-way, but you could come in, queue around, pull up here, drop off, and go out. So it was laid out that way. Now, I talked to the administrator, the operational manager of Bright Star, and they don't do that anymore, so you actually will go in and drop your kids off.
You'd bring them in.
You'd bring them in, right.
So you would park.
You'd park your car and you physically bring them in. So this site has 45 parking spaces onsite. And one of the allowances under the Foxborough zoning bylaws, not just for the Seapod area, but for any portion of town, as long as you are within 500 feet of public parking, either off-street or on-street, you can use that towards your parking requirement. And this site requires a total of 84 parking spaces, 34, which is one per employee, and one for four children. There are 45 parking spaces onsite, and then the auditorium parking lot is within 500 feet. And there are 40 public spaces within 500 feet of that site. So we have a total of 85 spaces that are, that comply under the zoning. So it's in compliance with the zoning. But how many, again, are right there on the site? 45. 45, okay. The, you know, we talked about the access to driveway. The site is on sewer. This is, this lot is on the private sewer treatment plant on the site. It's on water, of course. It's on municipal water. Both of those will come in from the driveway, the common driveway. It's not really a common driveway. it's not really a common driveway, but it's a driveway that, that this property has access to, and the stubs are already there for the sewer and the water, and they actually served the beer pop-up last year. The stormwater is, I know nobody was here at the time, but when we initially designed this, we designed it for two underground drainage systems, one here along the back and one here along the right side. It's a total of about 120 underground galleys. The system is designed in order to capture and infiltrate all the runoff up to the 100-year storm. There is an emergency overflow right here, and what it does is that ties into the drain system. And as I, this drain, this is already here, when this was built, when Shea Lane was built. So that manhole already exists. So it'd be tying it right there, if it ever got really big, it would tie in, go on Shea Lane, go into the big drainage basin that's next to, at the end of Shea Lane, across from Centennial Court, and then it eventually goes out to the reservoir on the west side, left side of the railroad tracks. The drainage system, we did, we do use limp, low-impact development elements, the same ones you, you see all the time that I use. The roof runoff is separate, so it doesn't mix with the dirty runoff coming in off the driveway. We're using tree box filters right here, these are the two catch basins, excuse me, to capture the runoff from the parking lot. So there's two catch basins here, you can see there's four tree box filters. So the runoff goes into the tree box filter and then goes into the catch basin for really big storms. It will overload the tree box filter and just go directly into the catch basin. It will drain into here. The roof drains here, they're all connected underground, but in the back, this is all play area in yellow. You can see how it's broken out for the different levels of kids. But there are three catch basins, what I call yard catch basins on the design, and they're all tied together with the roof drains, and that's because it's clean runoff, it doesn't go over pavement, and that ties in over here. So separating the runoff is an LID, tree box filters are an LID, and underground infiltration is also an LID element. The landscaping that's there now, actually, let me show you. I think this is going to come up. Come on, baby, maybe not. Okay. So let me share. So this right here on the left, if you, if you were standing kind of at the left corner of the lot, this is the landscaping that exists on the left side of the lot, between the superintendent's building and the new lot. We built that for the beer pop-up, if you remember. So that will stay there, and we're going to just take the same theme and move it toward closer to the street. That will be the landscaping on the left side. In the rear of the site, there's a six-foot vinyl fence, again, we put that in during the pop-up. That's, that's the landscaping for the rear, it's right on the lot line. And let me show you over here on the right side.
Using the lot line, you mean against where like Mr. Langton and the Shea, the Shea Lane?
Yes, yep. And that, there's a landscape plan on there, it's LA, I think it's LA 1. And then, let me show you this. So this is on the right side, this is the, I'm standing on the parking driveway between Conrad's and the site. Here's the white fence that I was just talking about, and here's the trees that line that. There's trees and shrubs along there, so we'll be just leaving that there. This is pretty cool, I was just talking to Doug about this on the parking lot, I don't know if everybody remembers, but if you remember the trees and the shops at Chestnut Green, I can remember when they were put in, they were, they were, they were pretty minimal. And you go out there now, and it was like 15, 16 years ago, so they're pretty good. Same thing here, these trees didn't exist, they were put in, and so they've pretty much bloomed. So those trees will remain, they'll be, this, this, this is the white fence, that will remain. And that's what we're showing for landscaping. In the parking lot, we have pin oaks because they grow straight up and they don't have a big spread. And those will be on the parking, on the parking islands, and they won't have, they won't interfere with the lighting that goes in there as well. So let me talk about the lighting very quickly. We have architectural lighting here, here, and here, the three islands, and that will light the parking lot. Those are on 20-foot poles. And then we have some lighting on the building, and it's the same type of lighting, I'm going to show you. Let me show you that. This is, this is the lighting that was approved by the planning board back when the state hospital was approved. There was a, a lot of landscape elements, lighting elements. So if you ever go down to the state hospital, you'll see that every site has this element in there. And whether it's a subdivision or whether this is, this happens to be right across the street. But this is the type of lighting you'll see for this site, some of it will be on the building, and some of it will be on the, on the 20-foot light poles. The lighting on the building will be 12. And in your packet, in the, I think it's the LT drawing, will give you a photometric plan that shows how it doesn't go off, go off the property. It's basically zero once it hits the property line. So I think that's it, and then we open to any questions.
So just a couple of items, Bill, just out of curiosity. So, so a lot of, a lot of the parking clearly is going to be on the auditorium lot.
Yes.
And so the access for people to come there, is just, is there a crosswalk right there?
Yes. So this is the, there's a sidewalk on this side of the building, there's actually sidewalk on both sides, there's a sidewalk here, there's a crosswalk here, and you can, and this new sidewalk or walkway that we have will be tying into the town sidewalk in front.
Have you made any arrangements for bollards in the preschool area so that?
Yes.
A car from Payson can't?
Yep, so if you take a look at, I mean, if you look at this sheet, I know it's hard to see, but see these dots? And if you look at, I think it's sheet three, which is your layout and grading plan, these dots are concrete bollards, set four feet on center, and they start here, 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 go along anywhere where a car could possibly come in, including over here. So even if somebody jumps the curb in front, they're gonna, they're gonna hit a bar.
The concern is little children, and you know, that, you know, that kind of stuff, to make sure that they're as protected as they can be. The light poles you just addressed, so the visitor spaces, you know, it appears that there's like nine of them, maybe that is directly on the, on the site. So are we presuming that most visitors will have to go to the other, to the auditorium spaces?
So Paige talked to me about this, so I called the operations guy today, I talked to him today. So he, here's what he, I asked him, I said, first of all, I asked him about the drop-off, and he told me what you just, what I just told you. But he also said that their drop-offs are generally between seven and nine, and then their pickups are four to six. And he said they have another facility, this is a national company, they have another facility that's twice the size of this. And they said they never, on that facility, they never need more than 12 parking spaces. So this is half the size, he said, I don't see us needing more than six. We have about 11 extra spaces, and that's if every single employee drives there and parks their car. He said that's also unlikely, so sometimes you'll have employees being dropped off, and sometimes you'll have employees carpooling. So he, his opinion is, operationally, he says, I think we have more than enough parking to do, to run our operation. I asked him about special events, you know, you know, like he saw what a disaster, you know, these elementary schools are for the first week of school. So he said, they do not have any special events, they used to, pre-COVID, they used to have one a year where they had the whole school and they would have like a cookout, so they don't do it anymore because of, because of COVID. He said, but what they do do is they have a, a move-up ceremony. So the little kids, the toddlers, the babies, of course, don't care, but the middle kids move up to the next level. So they have a little kids move up to the next level thing, and he said, but they do that by classroom. So they don't have like, you know, five classrooms going at once, they, they space it out by classroom. And he said, it is typically about nine kids in a classroom. So again, he says, we don't see that as an issue. If it does become an issue, he said, we'll just tell our employees on those days to park over at the.
So and in terms of like drop-off and pickup, I mean, you know, as you mentioned earlier, you know, in a, in a, in a previous time, parents would wait in a queue, and Tommy or Suzie would come out. But today, I'm presuming, and I don't have my little children myself anymore, that pretty much like you would at the Ahern or some other school, you need to ring in and show an identification and be an accepted person to pick that child up or drop that child off.
I didn't know, I didn't think they asked that, yeah, probably.
So.
Yeah, a lot of them do that.
I, I think a lot too. And so I just don't know how the mechanics of the lot will work on that. I guess people could park at the auditorium if they need to, walk their child across the street, check in, make sure, and, you know, pickup do the same. But just, if you could just get that clarified for us, just so we all understand.
And also, Bill, is the, is the idea that there are staggered times by age groupings? Or is it just kind of like whatever?
The impression he gave me is whatever.
I think it's work schedules.
Yeah.
Some parents have to go in at seven. I think one way of dealing with this is perhaps, much like we do with lighting or other issues, is perhaps we put a condition in there that says that if there is an issue with, you know, too much congestion or parking issues, that then we could have a condition that the staff must park at the auditorium, something like that. Like maybe we let them, since they have more experience than we do in it, we let them try it. And, you know, the good thing is the police department's right across the street. You know, if there's any spillage or issues that are going to occur, we'll know mighty quickly, and we could just have a condition in there that requires that they'd have to come up with Plan B, which might be that they just require their staff to park over there, and then that leaves, you know, the rest of the lot open.
Traffic pattern. Some sort of approved traffic pattern.
Yeah, exactly, something like that. So that's one way of doing, because we don't know, I mean, it might be that it's a non-issue, or it might be that, you know, there is congestion. I mean, I know, it's kind of like, you know, planning for Thanksgiving, you know, shop the day after Thanksgiving. I mean, those peak times, I mean, as a former daycare mom, you're always going to have a little bit of congestion, you're always going to have a little trouble, you learn how to deal with it, you learn to go 15 minutes earlier, or you, you know, typically the parents are going to be in such a rush that they're not going to want to put up with anything. So they'll find a way to make it so that it works without getting, causing issues. So that's just one suggestion I have to kind of wait and see, and make sure we have that contingency plan in place.
Will the school be the eventual owner of this property? Are you going to maintain ownership?
Say it again now?
Are you maintain ownership? Are you going to maintain ownership of this property? They're going to own eventually.
It's a public company that is the main company, and I believe, you might know better, but that, then someone buys like Massachusetts, and they, they plan to build 20 of these in Massachusetts now. And this is the third one this year.
So you're selling the land?
Yeah. As long as I get site plan approval.
But they would be willing, I mean, obviously they'd know that they'd have to live with whatever conditions are placed on the site. What about the light pole height? And not that I want to do, but when you first said 20 feet, I thought, oh, does it have to be that high? But then you showed that everywhere else is the same, you know, is there any flexibility of going lower? Is there any downside to that? Or, I mean, I actually think they're attractive, so it wasn't, but it was just more of, do you need 20 feet high?
You might lose coverage if you go.
That's what you, let me pop this up. Share the screen.
It's just, you look high for a single-story building.
Yeah.
It'd look more appropriate in front of the taller buildings.
Two-story, right.
So here is the photometric plan. I know it's hard to read. Do you guys have it? So you can see this is the parking lot. And if we dropped it to 12, you know, or something like that, you would just lose coverage in the front there. But, you know, on the other hand.
I mean, it's mostly going to be, it's mostly going to be an issue during the autumn and winter months.
That's what I was going to say. And it's only open, I mean, it's open seven to six, you know, it's not.
But, you know, once, you know, once we get into November, by 6 o'clock, it'll be way dark, so.
And I was trying to keep the, you know, it's only a 40 watt, it's a, it's a 40 watt LED, so it's, it's low. I was trying to keep it low, so you can get, probably get, drop it lower with a more, with bulb. I mean, I could do that.
It's probably not it, I mean, I was just thinking, but, you know, to your point, Kevin, it will be dark, and it gets mighty dark, you know, even now. I mean, well, I guess it's eight now, but I mean, it's been getting dark earlier and earlier. So when you have little kids running through the parking lot, you don't necessarily want it dim, you want to be able to see, so. As long as they're shielded, you know, and we've had no complaints that I'm aware of on the other lights, so.
Yeah, they're dark sky compliant, you could, you saw them, they have no, it's flat down.
We'll have our standard condition on there, that if there is an issue with lighting, we can.
Bill?
I think they put a lot of lights on the building.
What is the snow?
Yeah, we do have lights on the building. It's.
Snow.
Yeah, what are you, what are, how are you going to address the snow removal?
So if you look on sheet, I forget what sheet. It's at the end.
Sheet six.
Sheet six. So this is what we have for the. Go past it, here we go. So these are the areas where we come up with, you know, snow removal, again, this is pretty standard stuff. This is the landscape plan, so we have, these areas will have, you'll be able to push snow over here, push snow over here. The parking lot's not that big. So what we have is, is a total plowing area. You'll be able to have, you know, 15 inches of snow before you have off-site removal. And you're, and it's, you always have constant melting and stuff. I don't show anything on the islands, which you'll be able to put stuff on the islands. You'll be able to put some down here, I was just trying to be conservative.
Bill, if they put it where the, the tree box filters are, would that affect their operation?
No, because it just goes in the throat, you know, the water goes in the throat, sits on top and goes down. But, you know, you wouldn't want to.
Right.
You wouldn't want to.
But it would probably be reasonable to have a condition there that, you know, to use the designated snow storage areas, but then, you know, it's, snow would have to be removed from site if any spaces are being lost. Like basically, we can't afford to lose even a single space, so it would be fair.
It's fine.
It's fairly flat, too, that parking.
Yeah, it's very flat.
It's pitching back to a Shea, right?
Anything else on the board? Is there anyone in the audience who had questions?
Kind of in the middle.
Zoom, right?
Or anyone on Zoom?
Does Tom have anything?
Tom, how about you?
Oh, I think you said no.
No? Okay.
Isn't it nice to finally see something there?
Yeah. 17 years.
Pretty, pretty opposite from a beer garden.
Okay. Anything else we need to address?
What do you think?
The line of our properties.
Yeah, sorry.
That's about in the, the other residential. You mentioned that, that you're going to add more plantings to go down to the street. From the picture, it looked kind of bare.
Spars.
Spars, thank you. So is it possible to add, you know, the, the offset, a second row?
Well, I, yes, yes it is. But, you know, Doug owns it, and I want, that's why I showed you the other one, to show you that, you know, what's there is, is pretty good. Let me just.
Granted, those were planted only a year ago.
Right, they were only six footers, just like, like this is all that's going to be planted here too. And let me find the landscaping. Here we go. So you want just a second row down here of these?
Staggered.
It's fine.
That's no problem.
Yeah, it's okay.
Yeah, that's no problem.
Thank you.
I think I'm good. So we can close? Make a motion to close the public hearing. Second, those in favor?
Aye.
It's going to be on your property.
I'll make a motion that we approve it as submitted.
With conditions discussed.
So the conditions I have besides the standard ones would be that during events. You guys want to listen to the conditions, just in case you have any issues? During events, employee parking would, would be in the auditorium lot. And then a condition there that if there's issues come up with parking, that it may be that employees have to park in the auditorium lot. And snow removal slash storage, that you'll use the designated areas. And then snow removal may be required if, so that there's no spaces lost during operations. And then lastly would be a second row of our brevities along the left side, which is not the technical term, but yes. The east side.
I know what you mean.
And then standard conditions, yeah.
Yes, ma'am. And I would second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Very good, Mr. King. Good to see you getting a use out of that land.
Good to see you guys.
Good to see you as well. Get those pub boys rolling.
That's right.
I know you are.
It's out of his hands.
I know that. I know that.
Do they have a target date on opening?
November 1st is the target. This supply chain is just.
Killing everybody. Yeah, it's killing everyone.
Anything else?
So we do have a continued, we have a hearing to be continued, 204 East Street. And in addition to the continuance, we've actually secured an extension request. Because as you know, they, well, let me back up. For special permits, once you open the hearing, there's no deadline. But for definitive plans, there is a deadline. So just to be safe, we wanted to make sure that there was, the definitive plan would not be approved by fault. So they've gone ahead and submitted a request for an extension to November 30th and a continuance until October 13th, I believe.
Right.
Correct.
Thank you.
Good night. Thank you.
If you want to take the November 30th one, that's an extension of the time to make a decision on the definitive plan. That might be a good first one.
Okay. So I'll make a motion that we, that we do an extension on 204 East Street to November 30th for a decision on the plan. And that we honor a request to continuance to October 13th for.
At 7:30?
Second that? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion over, John?
Another early.
Aye.